Order in the court, order in the court.
Do we have an agenda, I mean, other than Foxfire Village, you didn't send us an agenda?
Yes, I did.
Okay, well, Mary, yes.
Did you give me a send it?
Yes, because I have been checking your stuff.
Rick, you got the agenda?
Yes, I did.
Alright.
When did you send it?
Oh, last Thursday.
Oh, well, maybe.
That's alright.
Listen, I get like two thousand emails in one day, so. I know, it's junk, okay, most of it.
Alright, I just sent it to you. Okay, so, so let's make a note that Al isn't here and Tasha's not here.
Alright.
Okay. Al's with his mom on a medical and Tasha's on vacation. Lucky girl.
I'm on vacation next month, do you know where I'm going? To Raleigh. Downtown Raleigh for three days.
I'd say some, but I don't really want it on here.
No, you don't, I mean, listen, I've been here five years, I'm looking at it, I'm like, what is this? And it's Raleigh and I'm like, oh, I've never been there. And so then I found myself a show and decided
Hey, there, no, no.
to live for three days of the hotel downtown.
Okay, so, we need to go through the minutes from the twelfth of May.
Okay, so I was gonna ask you about that because online I haven't sent her the nineteenth, the twenty-third, and I sent you the twentieth and the eleventh.
Hang on a second. Ah, let me go up here, now I'm confused.
So I need to see I sent them to you. But I don't know if we did, what did we approve last time?
Why don't you tell me in a second?
I just wanna, I don't wanna Okay, we approved nineteenth and twenty-third last time.
Right, and I sent you the sixteenth because I forgot to bring them last year.
Okay, sixteenth of what?
May.
Okay. And you did send me that?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I'll have to look for it.
Hang on a second, Rick, you got them?
The minutes?
From the sixteenth?
Okay, can you, can you send us that so we can approve it?
Yeah, yeah.
Just look for the last ones.
Second here. Here, I'll make it really easy.
I, I have the last one you sent, that was, this.
If you send it to us, then we can just, I mean
I did send it, but I mean, hold on a second, because you need to have a copy of it anyway, though.
Yeah. Well, I do, but.
Yeah, I just sent it with no subject, oops.
That's alright, I got it.
Okay. So, let's go through the ones for the sixteenth of May first. Which is pretty straightforward.
You say sixteen?
Sixteenth of May, yeah.
Okay.
And you weren't here.
No, I wasn't.
Correct, and I took the minutes and then I forgot to bring them last time.
Okay.
Okay? So the only things we did, um, you can see that we approved the minutes from March fourteenth, March twenty-first, April fourteenth, and April eighteenth.
Okay.
Okay? The Tuesday, May sixteenth brings us up to date. Um, we talked about the RA subdivision, RA five same, the RA five family subdivision provision. Okay? And the limited subdivision. And that's really all there was to it.
Alright.
So.
So that's the sixteenth.
That's the sixteenth of May, yep.
And then, uh
Let's do these first.
We approved the nineteenth and twenty-third.
Right, but we need, we need to approve these first before we go any further.
Okay, yes, yes.
So I need a motion to approve the minutes from the sixteenth of May.
Okay, I move.
Would it matter, I wasn't
Doesn't matter.
on them.
Yeah, it would, I second, okay, yeah, it does, yeah, we'll just thank you for bringing that up, we'll just keep it really clean. You were here in spirit, right?
Yes, yes.
Alright.
Okay, so let's say, okay?
Alright, yep.
Then five nineteen and twenty-third were approved last time.
Yep, so we just
Okay, so now, I did send you those, I, I'm sorry that I sent them like the Friday before, but Mary, that's the, the truth is that that's
No, that's okay, that's totally fine.
That's kind of how I do things. If I have something on Friday, I'll start working on it today.
No, that's, no, that's fine, I Hang on a second. There we go. Okay, so meeting notes from the twentieth of June you sent me?
Yes, and the eleventh.
Okay, so we didn't approve the twentieth of June?
Hmm, no, the, the, twentieth of June was the last month.
Oh, it was last month, duh, alright, got it, okay. Okay, Rick, do you have those?
No, I only sent them to you because
Oh, oh, I didn't, Teresa, I'm sorry, 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 sorry.
If you don't approve them for me, I will not send them to anybody.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Yeah, but, but remember that what happens is, we approve them as a group.
Okay, so when I send them to you, you also want me to send them to the others?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I blew that, I blew it, I blew it.
Okay, I'm fine, I'm fine. Okay.
Okay, they're coming to you, Rick.
Got it.
There we go.
I thought you wanted to see them first.
Got it.
Okay. So on the twentieth everybody was here, Mr. Montes was noted as a new member.
Did I say that?
Yeah. No, I didn't.
Oh, yes, I did.
Okay. So.
Well, I basically talked about the changes from the, from five to three years under family subdivision.
Yep.
And from, uh, and I said that it was based on the council meeting that and the minimum lot from two acres to one.
Okay, in the limited subdivision, I don't think we changed the second lot size to be an acre.
Well, I actually have it on the actual document.
Because I thought what we talked about was, um, we're dealing with pieces of property, seven acres or greater and less than ten acres. And the discussion we had, if I remember correctly, is that we were gonna give, the original option was you could split that property into, um, two lots, but one of them had to be five acres and the minimum, the minimum size of the other parcel had to be two acres. And then we started talking about its financial, the financial benefit to someone who has nine acres or nine and a half acres or nine point seven five or whatever they have, to be able to split that puppy in half.
I thought, I, I actually saw it at my I made that idea. I don't know why I underlined it.
Uh, yeah, but I don't, I don't think I, I don't think
You don't want me to change that to an acre?
Well, I don't, no, I don't think, let me, let me look at my, let me look at my draft here. Let me, let me look at my notes.
I don't know why I'm underling it, but it's possible, I just tested whether I have come in.
Did I activate? I dropped that. Yeah, what we said was that one lot of the limited subdivision must be at least five acres and the minimum size of the, of the second lot must be at least two acres. And then we added the option at our last meeting to split the lot in half one time.
Okay, so, alright, so it's not, uh
Take that, I think we should take that part out about reducing it to one acre.
And instead?
And instead, um, we approved giving the landowner the option to split the parcel in half.
The, which parcel now, the, the second one?
We're in the limited subdivision.
I understand, but which one, the, the second lot?
No, because you're, you're talking about lots here that are seven acres or more and less than ten acres. So if I have an eight acre lot, we're now gonna offer that landowner the option to split it in half. In addition to the option to split it into a five and something else.
Okay, so the, the split is basically on the total number of acres?
Always, yeah, yep, yep.
Okay.
But the minimum would be an acre?
No.
Two acres?
Two.
Yeah.
In the family subdivision, we agreed that because it was fam- land and you're giving it away, that if you wanna give it away in one acre parcels, we shouldn't stand in the way of that. We originally discussed this back in May, Rick, but just before you came on, we had said that the minimum lot size was two acres.
Okay.
But when you consider, I mean, I asked the county how many of these they process a year, maybe three. Which means we might do one in three years, we're just not gonna do it that often. And so, um, and if we put it at one acre in the family subdivision, that also lines up with the county. Okay? Teresa, you got it?
I said, give, we're giving the owner the opportunity to split the lot in half based on the total, um, uh, size of the acre.
Based on the total size of the lot, yeah.
Of the lot.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay? So we need to make that change when we're done.
This was under family subdivision?
No, it's under limited.
Oh, limited.
Limited.
Alright.
Yep.
So just make sure I'm looking at the right thing here.
Yep.
The second, cause I have under limited subdivision, we suggested that the second lot minimum size should be one instead of two.
And that's not true, we just, yeah, we just
We're deleting that and instead saying
It's two.
It's
The minimum has to be two?
No, we're not, I guess, I guess it is.
The minimum still is two.
Okay.
I mean, if you have a seven acre parcel, you can either split it in half or you can do a two, a five acre and a two acre.
And a two, right, so the minimum has to be two on them?
Yeah.
Okay, but basically, I don't, I'm crossing it out because it is not an amendment to the, uh, document. You know, the, the, the the two, the two to one that I wrote in there
Needs to come out.
was to be, uh, an amendment to the, uh, to the to the document that we approved.
Okay, but then, we did make an amendment to the document that we approved.
Yes, but not that.
But, but, yeah, correct, so it needs to come out where it says, under the limited subdivision.
Yes.
That, that needs to come out and instead it needs to say, under the limited subdu- subdivision, it was suggested that the owner will also be allowed to split the lot in two. Okay, two parcels, two equal parcels.
Did you understand?
Split the lot in half, put in split the lot in half.
So this, the one that I have here, just under limited subdivision, says item five.
Cross it out.
That whole one is gone, is gone.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and then it's gonna be reworded.
And it's replaced by giving the owner
Half, you can split it in half, or
The action.
Minimum, one, one of the lots has to be two.
Five. Two.
What, correct.
Yeah, okay.
And I could probably say that here, right?
Yeah, well, that's also in the original recommendation, okay?
Okay. But, uh
Now, where it says, motion to approve the items listed above, we need to make the same change in limited subdivisions.
Yes, I, okay. I have to read, okay.
And it says, length of time the deeded lot is held, be changed from five years to three, I think we're missing the three.
Did I miss the thing?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
That's alright.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, then, accessory buildings.
Okay, about that, accessory buildings, we approved the motion to amend the maximums for footage for lots of less than one acre from three hundred and fifty to four hundred square feet.
Okay, the new business?
New business, Chris Law was postponed. Municipal, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask us if we can table municipal tonight because we need to approve it and I think we would do better if we had a full house when we're here.
Well, I said at a future meeting.
Yeah, yeah, but I've got it on the agenda tonight.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, planning, zoning, training, we did. We're gonna look at temporary structures tonight and I think that was it.
Alright, okay.
So Teresa, when you correct these, resend them, okay?
Okay.
That's perfect, alright, good. Okay, need a motion to approve with corrections.
Motion to approve with corrections.
Okay.
For second, all in favor, aye, awesome.
Aye.
Alright, very good.
Okay, and the, 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 not the other ones, I just simply, like I said, I just listed the thing we did.
Yeah, and that's totally fine.
General review of the U D O, all of the planning and zoning board, working with city council and zoning administrator, board adjustments training, privacy fencing, expansion of housing opportunities on already developed lots, watershed, zoning district.
Covered a lot of ground, didn't we?
And land use plan.
Alright, hold on.
Which brings me to a good
Alright, wait, let's
Nothing, nothing to do this, maybe we should just
Yeah, let's do this first, yeah. Okay, let me just get in there.
So, I move that we approve the minutes of the special, this is July eleventh special.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Great.
Okay.
Alright, done. Perfect. Alright, so.
Alright, so that takes care of it.
Alright, now.
I, I have something and I don't know, I don't think it goes in here, but it goes with what it is mentioned in the information that you sent us, so I need some clarification or should I wait until?
Well, let's, let's get there first, let's go right down the agenda, okay?
Okay, okay.
Alright. First on the agenda. Alright, municipal zoning district, I need a motion to table that.
That's old business?
Yeah, it's old business, um, and what I might do, if you guys are open to it, Tasha's back, I think, tomorrow and Al will be back. I'm gonna, I can finish putting it together and maybe we can pull a special off next week or the week after just to go through, give it a lot of detail cause you gotta, you gotta insert in fencing, you gotta insert in building height, you gotta insert in setbacks, you gotta, all that stuff. And I wanna be sure that I won't miss anything before we send it to the village council.
I just, my, my daughter knows mom is going for chemotherapy on Friday
Okay.
and I'm the backup.
Okay.
When she comes back, if there, nobody's there to take care of her, I have to
Okay, well, that's alright.
I'm the one that's gonna do it, so.
Okay, well, what I'll do is I'll throw, when is she, she doing chemo on Friday?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe later next week.
Okay.
Alright, okay, and Alright, okay, let's start talking about temporary structures. This is kind of
So you're saying we're gonna deal with this on a special?
Yeah, I think on a special.
Yes.
Cause I really wanna get it to the, to the village council because they've got family and limited, they're gonna have two recommend, they have another recommendation on increasing the square footage for accessory buildings. Um, and then we would give them municipal and then they can have one more giant public hearing. Okay? Um, temporary structures, let me just throw out a couple ideas, and I sent over some links to some things I found on some other villages. But basically does everybody agree, they, they need to have a permit? You can't do that and just throw it up there, it's gonna have
Right, right.
some kind of permit, okay?
And, and, uh, at least Aberdeen presents it as a as a thing that I may stay there for a while.
Well, and we gotta talk about that, what is Aberdeen's, um Wait.
Here, Mary, if you wanna look at it, I can look at it.
No, I'm gonna look it up online.
Okay.
What section was it, four point five?
Four point five. Do you wanna go to Aberdeen, U D O? They're very fancy, that's why I'm like to look at their stuff reminds me of being
Did Aberdeen, Aberdeen did a good job.
And then, then their applicability is on a lot of different things.
Well, here's, here's the thing, and Southern Pines is the same way, and so were After Dick, where else I ended up looking, but the thing I think we need to be careful of is that we need to not try to make the applicability too broad.
Not, yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean, cause that, it, that just gets to be a nightmare for Lisa.
Well, and their, their, their situation is different than ours
Yeah.
Aberdeen's not gonna get it. You know, they have a lot of
The cloud's not gonna
Yeah, we just dropped the internet.
The internet's
Uh-oh.
I think we just tanked it, didn't we?
Shit, god.
It's connected, but it's just not loading.
There we go, okay, I just got mine to load. I just got mine to load.
And it just stuck.
They have it on, what I'm saying is that they have it on construction, merchant sales,
Right, right.
local food vendors,
And, and then
other seasonal sales, special events. They have temporary dwellings for even for healthcare structures. I guess what you would do like to stay out there.
I don't know.
So it has to be pretty sturdy.
Well, and this is, okay, this is another thing that, that, I don't know how far we wanna get into that, but let's, let's start by just going through some basic things that we think every, that it needs to have, does that make sense?
And what, what brought it to, to, you know, to be
What brought it up?
Yes, so that I can
Well, what, what, what brought it up is
I understand where you're at.
We have a tent that's been pitched kind of on the corner of South Shamrock and Richmond Road for probably well over six months.
Okay.
Okay.
And what's the, do you know what it's being used for? To storage?
It'll be storage, I don't know.
The Aberdeen, do you, what, what was it under?
Four point five, look at the U D O.
I just have the documents under, is that what it is?
Yes.
This is all that came out.
No, they look at, uh, government, you see that's under that.
I have, it's under planning inspection.
No, it's not under the general staff, hold on.
Here's, here's
No, that's a regular thing that you can go to when you need just general staff.
Teresa's an expert in that.
Yeah, unified, uh
Unified the
Did you find the unified?
Yep.
Okay, that's what you
Okay.
And then go to four point five. Temporary uses, yeah.
Okay. So, let's, let's talk about what kind of temporary uses you want to allow a structure for. I don't think we really have any of this written in our U D O.
Cause we don't have a single
There's nothing
I looked at it, we don't have a single thing.
No, we don't. So, what I'm thinking is, the one that needs to be addressed right now is, um, temporary, what was it, five point, what, seven two? Or five point, four point five, right?
Well, in just looking at it, I thought the construction might be one.
I think construction is one, um
I mean, that's something that might happen for us.
Well, that's, that's something that is happening for us.
Um if you're talking about really short, maybe some kind of special event or vendor thing or whatnot.
Let's stay on construction first, I think. So for construction, do we all agree it needs to be permitted?
Yeah, oh, well, yeah, I agree with, all, all of this which we're gonna talk about should have, should require
Okay. And I don't really care, I mean, it can require a permit and we don't have to charge for the permit, I, I don't, I'm not crazy about nickel and diamond people for everything they wanna do. But we do need to have a permit, okay? We did, I asked Lisa about this, we, we approved, planning and zoning didn't approve it, but Lisa asked me about it and I was fine with it. Pete Mace, who has, um, the property down Hoffman for Grant Pines on the right-hand side gated community, he and his wife Joanne were doing some, still doing some development back there and they wanted to put up a temporary, you know, like a temporary little office, you know, shed so to speak. And they came to us and I was like, hey, look, I don't have a problem with that, I mean, and then we said, like, give them ninety days and then if they need extra time, they just need to come back and ask us for it, and they were really good about it. The situation that we have now is this thing's been there a long time, and at first, my guess is they were enclosing their carport, which is fine, but that's all done now. So, I, I think, and it's, it's a tent, I mean, it's got holes in a mill frame and, you know, stuff like that. I'll bet you it's probably ten by twelve, ten by fourteen, something like that, so it's a pretty good sized thing, and so for construction purposes, for construction or remodeling or something
Well, that makes sense, I mean, if you wanna keep machinery or whatever it is that you
Well, yeah, because you don't want it out in the weather.
You don't want it, uh, sitting, uh, you know, in the rain or
So, what do you think about the initial length of time?
I kind of like what you said about ninety days, is that
So this is for
Is that enough for whatever
This is a residence, let's talk, let's, let's separate this from commercial, okay?
Okay, how long does it, what would you say, how long does the average house that is being constru- built, but it's on schedule, okay, not those that just sit there forever? How long would you say that it takes?
About six months now, six months?
Yeah. Is that a reasonable time to have this?
I think it's six months.
I think six months probably. I mean, about six months.
I'm okay with that, if it's
Most, most of the builders, though, here, um, they move their stuff. I mean, they're spec builders, they're not hanging around, you know.
The only thing was with the recently was because of the supply issues that it couldn't went longer, but
Exactly, yeah, and there's nothing, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I would, I feel comfortable if it's six months.
So now, when, we're, so we're talking about a, a temporary.
Temporary, yes.
So, a carport, you just mentioned something about a carport.
No, these guys were enclosing their carport.
So they were making a permit.
A room, yeah, they were making a room out of it, yes.
What about a, what about a carport?
No, not allowed.
How, what would that, it's not allowed?
It's not allowed, not allowed, nope, 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 not allowed.
No, no, I mean, how, what, why would you consider that a temporary thing?
No, that's wrong, um, it's not, so that's why I'm thinking
It doesn't qualify as a
Carports, carports by ordinance are not allowed, okay? So, um, let me just look here, uh Okay. Southern Pine says this, if not associated with the building, building permit, the owner or occupant of the site shall apply for a zoning compliance permit and sign an acknowledgement that the container shall be removed no more than thirty days after its placement on the site. Um, they also say that contain, and they're talking about containers, but again, a container, a tent, it's still a temporary, is a temporary structure. Um, shall not be placed within the minimum sided rear setbacks for the applicable zoning, makes sense. Um, or be located closer than ten feet from the front property line. The property owner maintain, may receive a one-time extension for addition, for an additional thirty calendar days at the discretion of the planning director. Um, that's
Okay, but now we're talking about a container?
Well, we're, we, they're all gonna be kinda lumped together, I mean
Okay, but I'm saying, because I'm, I'm talking here about tents, so are we including
Right, but, well, if, if you think about a temporary structure, you know, a, a pod, that's a temporary, that's a temporary structure, a tent is a temporary structure.
Okay.
I would
Should be.
Well, yeah, it's, it's about, it's about.
Okay, so, so we're lumping it together.
The other thing, I'm just, who said this though, hang on a second. There was also something somewhere, and maybe it was in one of the other municipalities that I looked at, that the container or the temporary structure had to be removed within thirty days of the issuance of the occupancy permit. That would be new construction. This is a remodel, so I mean, the people are already, you know, the occupancy is already there. So, I don't know if we get an estimated time from the person when they apply for, for the permit.
Well, what would they, so if you're getting a pod, just, we'll talk about the pod. So if you're getting a pod and you're having your house redone or remodeled or built,
Yeah.
shouldn't it be allowed to stay there until the house is finished?
I would think so, and that's why one of the ordinances I looked at said that you had to remove the temporary structure from the property within thirty days of the issuance of the occupancy permit. Makes total, which, which is very sound to me, I mean.
That's, that's generous, because usually wouldn't need it one minute.
Yep. Well, and the person's paying to have it there, I mean, so they're not, I wouldn't let it sit around, I mean, you get paid by the day for that stuff. Um, so how do we handle, that's, the occupancy permit is pretty straightforward. What to me is not as straightforward is the case that is kinda prompting this, and that is a remodel. You know, it's not, the, the property's already occupied.
That's the tent.
No.
So, a tent.
What difference does it make?
Well, it makes a difference, because when you issue an occupancy permit, that's a specific, the person has to come to the village and get the occupancy permit. That's a specific date that that permit is issued, and so you would have thirty days from that date. If you're remodeling, you know, you get your building permit, right? That company has to, has to go through Lisa and you actually get the permit from the county. Um, and then if you got a permit for temporary storage or something like that, be it a tent or a pod or whatever, how do we measure when that needs to come down? I think that's what I'm trying to ask.
Right, because if you have, if you ask for a permit, generally, how long does the permit last?
Well, it depends, a building permit would last until the build was done, and there are some restrictions in the U D O about that. But, I mean, that's the question.
On remodel?
I don't know.
I ask you a question because it's different here than you, you know, than what I'm used to. And I did ask you this question before. I told you, when somebody comes and submits plans, I'll say, I don't know if you remember, I said, who's responsible for the inspection, blah, blah, blah? You said the county is.
Yes.
When the bill, you know, when the building is going on. Does, do we get notified when, uh?
You gotta, not necess, no, not necessarily, because the county comes in and they sign off, I mean.
Okay, they sign off and every, everything is done, and does the county have like a final inspection?
Well, here's the thing, let's, on, on an occupancy, yes, but that's a, the occupancy permit's easy. I mean, thirty days from the date the occupancy permit is issued on the new build, your temporary storage has to be out of there. To me, that's very straightforward. The remodel stuff is a little different.
But how, the, the problem I see, that I foresee is putting up a, a tent, while you're remodeling, I understand you wanna put stuff out there, but what happens if it's not remodeled, they just have a tent out there?
Well, if that's, it's not gonna work.
Right, so how do you, how do you have something, an ordinance that says, a tent, what if you're not remodeling, you just have a tent out there?
Uh, let me ask you.
What would you do?
Here, here's, here's the.
But, I think I'm piggybacking on what he's gonna say.
Okay.
Is there any way in our system to, uh, to come up with something that, when they, they, they get something from the county or when things are finished, that they have to report to us? There's no way we can?
That's a zoning administrator nightmare. That's crazy. You, somewhere in there you gotta trust the process, otherwise Lisa's gonna jump off the top of the tall building.
So, I, I'm just, forgive me, but if you, if you have a tent, enclosed tent you're using, let's just say you put it up, you have a wedding in your yard.
Yep.
And you have it.
Yep.
For guests.
Yep.
Isn't there something that could be done that says you have, you know, there's no, nothing needed if it's forty-eight hours?
Right, yeah, we can write all that in there, some of them actually have stuff like that. That's, that's pretty straightforward.
If you, so what, why couldn't we do something then that says, if you have a, a permit out, so, you do, you have your wedding, it's done, you know, two days, it's gone, but if you have it up more than the two days, then you're going to need some kind of permit. So if you're doing a remodeling and you're saying, I'm going to need this tent up for longer than the two days, couldn't you do something that way?
I, I think it's better to say, cause they're gonna have to get a building permit, and if there's temporary, if there's a temporary structure gonna be associated with that building permit, that all needs to be upfront. Because you don't, you don't understand that when Lisa has to do zoning, she doesn't have time to go out and check to see if they took it down. Or, I mean, we can, we can write a category, I think, for uses like special events, that, that would be all right. No problem, okay? But I'm talking about somebody who's using that tent during a remodeling project, or, or just using it for additional storage.
How do you know?
Well, if somebody doesn't come to us, if somebody doesn't come to Lisa and get a zoning and get a permit for it, then enforcement co, the enforcement officer can just go say, hey, you gotta get a permit for this, and here are the conditions under which the permit is issued.
For a certain length of time.
Right, right, and that's what I'm trying to figure out, is what is the length of time?
So, what seems to me that would make sense is to have that separate for, like, like you said, for special events, wedding, every birthday, whatever. So that's, that's easy to put it in there. But then if you have, if you're going to have it up, so then, what we need is to, for a length of time past the two days or forty-eight hours.
Well, right, right, so I'm talking about, what's the initial length of time that should be allowed for? But, I, again, I'm not so concerned about new construction.
Right.
Because the new construction is just thirty days after the issuance of the occupancy permit, boom, that's a hard date, it's the remodeling part.
Right, so, when you get a permit for the remodeling,
Yep.
you're doing it, then we could set a timeframe, like you said, thirty days.
I don't think, I don't think thirty days is enough.
You don't think so?
No, I mean.
For a remodel?
No, I, my house was remodeled, I remodeled my house for three months.
Well, then you could, well, either make it a little bit longer, or you can just say, every thirty days you can just, you know, redo it.
You know what, what if we did, I mean, if you're gonna do a remodel, generally, my experience with contractors here is, they come to your house one day and then they go to Uncle Joe's house, and then you see him again, and it goes, it goes on a while, all right? So maybe, what if we give them ninety days initially? And then, um, they can come back to the zoning administrator for additional time based on the circumstances.
Makes sense.
And, let's say, for example, they go to put in, I don't know, something, and there's a supply chain issue.
Right.
Okay, well, if you can't do it, you can't do it, right? So what if we did, you give ninety days to start? It's pretty generous, actually.
I, I think that is, I, I, I haven't had anything major done remodeling in Los, I don't know what, like, what is considered remodeling that you would need that long? Like, what is a?
Well, I mean.
Well, and here's the other thing too, if you're doing a remodel yourself, right, it's gonna take you longer.
Right. But then how, is that something that should be taken into consideration too? Because if you're doing it yourself, it could be three years.
Well, I, I, but here's the thing, at some point, let, let's say, this, this case we're talking about, as soon as that thing was enclosed, you put stuff in that room, right? I mean, I mean, I get it, if you're still, you have drywall and all that kinda stuff, but you still need some kinda storage. But once that's enclosed, you move stuff in.
Could you do, cause you're being generous, I think, with the ninety days on the model, but then, you two, only, only human nature, people tend to leave things up and could you say something like, a- after ninety, ninety days, then there'll be a charge for the permit?
No. You gotta, one of the things you gotta really be careful of is that we can't make it more difficult for the zoning administrator.
The, the, the thing that I think it's different is that right now, we don't have anything. So, so whoever has it up, they don't care.
Right.
But if you do something.
But in their defense, they don't know, either.
Right, right, no, but I'm saying, if we put something in the U D, U D O, then we put people on notice when they first start.
Oh, yeah.
To do that, and at least there's some kind, just like with everything else, there's some kind of.
Right, that's why I keep generous with the ninety days, we should give them ninety days to remodel, then things happen, it could be longer, but if, you know, you're not gonna leave it up for a year, so, there should be an incentive to get it done where maybe there's some penalty or not penalty, but a, something that makes an incentive to get it out of there, so you don't have it up for a long time.
Well, I would, I would say ninety day start and just to make it kinda like, and nuisance to them is, you know, it's an increment of thirty days.
Reapply?
Thirty days.
Well, what about this?
So that, uh, you know, I mean, thirty days didn't happen, you have to come back again.
So you just reapply for the next, so after ninety days, reapply again for it?
Well, but then we should have some, some later at some point.
I think the initial length of time is ninety days, and I put with an option for additional time based, uh, at zoning administrator discretion. Give Lisa some flexibility to be able to say, hey, look, how long do you need to have this thing up? And how about if we put a maximum of six months?
Okay.
Only because you need some, you need a limit, right?
Oh, yeah, you gotta have something, you, okay, maximum of six months, one time per year.
There you go.
All right, somebody has, somebody had, I think Southern Pine, and you can always tell what, what a town's had to deal with by the one little thing in there that nobody else has, you know? Okay, so for construction, again, you need to have a permit, and we think no cost for the permit, okay? Needs to be, all temporary storage, uh, needs to be taken down within thirty days of the, the issuance of the C O, certificate of occupancy. That's, that's enforceable. I gave you the C O on the twenty-fifth of May, your temporary storage for construction has to be gone by the twenty-fifth of June. Very, very enforceable, all right? For remodeling, again, it needs to be permitted, and link, initial length of time ninety days, with an option for additional time at zoning administrator discretion. Go ahead, Rick.
Well, you, cause then you put up a lot of pressure on Lisa again to say, you know, what the time, shouldn't we just have it in there? We can extend it up another ninety days and ask?
Well, we, we put in, max is six months.
Oh, okay.
That's fine.
Oh, okay, so that's good.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, maybe somebody comes to her and says, hey, look, you know, my plumber got behind, couldn't get these fittings, can you just give me thirty days? She's gonna, I mean, we are not in the business of beating people up.
Right, of course.
But as long as we have something that says maximum six months, that you're done.
That's good.
And it makes you, makes you move, okay? All right, one time per year, okay, that's good. So, let's define, what do we consider to be temporary structures? Pods?
Or a tent.
Pod, tent.
Tent.
I would say that.
What is it? A tent, would it be an enclosed tent, or is it any tent, or is it?
Well, I think if you're gonna put stuff in it, the tent needs to be enclosed. I mean, if you're dumb enough to leave stuff under a tent.
Yeah, I mean, the rain, the rain is gonna fly right through it.
You never know.
When your gear disappears and you just are upset the next morning, like, yeah. Um, do we wanna limit the size of the tent? We're not gonna get through all this tonight, we just, I just need, I just need something to work from.
I, I don't.
How big?
I mean, you could have huge, but who's gonna put?
Well.
How, how big, how big can a tent be?
But that's a reasonable, that's a reasonable question, because here's the other thing. Before we define size and stuff, we agree, they, it, it needs to be within setbacks.
Okay, there you go.
Right?
Yes, yes. I don't know, how, how large?
What is the?
Would they make, do they make tents?
Well, you can make, you can.
You kidding me?
Larger than the house?
Oh, yeah, you can have tents of a couple thousand feet.
Yeah.
Thousand square feet. Um, it needs to be within the setback.
I don't see one with the sizes.
I think that's, um, I think that's good, because then you're, you're limiting it in what you can put in anyway then. I mean, you're not gonna put a giant tent in because you have the setbacks, it's not gonna be, you're not going to be able to put it in your yard if it
Right.
goes outside that.
I think there needs to be a maximum size though, I really do, whoopsie.
I, well, the max, the maximum size.
See, on a pod, it's pretty simple, they only come one, you know? I mean, you could do ten by fourteen.
That's very small.
Well, that's a hundred and forty square feet.
Yeah, but if you have.
For sure. I mean, that, if you're putting rooms in there.
That's, that's my shit, that's not very much.
You'd put your stuff like that in a tent, subject to humidity, ooh, I would.
Yeah, I know.
No, I know, but still.
I'm, the kinds of things I'm thinking are storing in there are drywall, lumber, you know, stuff like that.
Building stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I'm construction stuff.
Yeah, well, still, or whatever you want, ten by fourteen is not that big.
Okay. Good, well then, give me another number. You mathematically genius.
How about this, use the same as a accessory building?
Has a lot of square feet, four by square feet, that's huge. That's freaking huge.
Well, you're giving them the benefit to put something up, and it's only temporary, it's only for that.
Yeah. I think, I think that's big. Um, okay, so.
Twenty by twenty?
That's four hundred.
Yeah. I mean, for, for a temporary.
Hey, how long's this wall? Sixteen? I, I probably.
No, this is longer than, you mean that way?
From the door?
No, 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 from the door, I'm sorry, from the edge of the door, was that about sixteen?
About six, twelve.
Yeah, probably about sixteen.
Okay, and what are we across?
It's gonna do about.
Twenty-four?
Twelve.
Twenty?
Eighteen, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four.
Okay, so if you had an accessory building, a storage, the size of this part of this room, that's pretty good sized.
And what's, so sixteen by twenty?
Sixteen by twenty, it's gonna be three twenty.
Yeah, so, four, so we said four hundred, so it's three fifty?
I just, I think four hundred is huge.
If you're thinking the size of this room and you're putting even work, even if you're putting the stuff that the contractors are using, whatever, their equipment, saws and table saws and things like that, you need some room.
Well, the other thing to take into account is that, one of the lots around where I live,
Yeah.
it, there's no way they would, I mean, they, they could fit anything like that, so they wouldn't.
Well, that, that's true, so.
So somebody got something really big.
They can't get it in the setbacks, they can't get it in the setbacks.
Right, it's not gonna work anyway.
So I would, I wouldn't worry about it.
Three, three hundred, I mean, sex, accessory sized building, if you can put in an accessory building and be in the setbacks at four hundred feet per se, right? Then technically, you should be able to have that temporary.
That's a fifteen by twenty would be three hundred, what do you think? Now, let's, let's fly it up the flight pole and see what happens. And, here's the other thing, you know, if you're doing a remodel, um, if, if you're using contractors, they are not gonna walk into your backyard, they're gonna want that thing in front, because, I mean.
But they can't have it in.
It has to be according to.
It has, no, it's a hallway.
Well, they, they allow, wait a minute, wait a minute, they allow, we said within the setbacks, we haven't defined, I mean, you can't ask somebody, I, I mean, if I'm a contractor and I'm coming to your house to work, I'm not walking to your backyard to get all my stuff. You know what I mean, that just doesn't, especially not if I'm coming in the front door to do stuff, or coming in through the garage.
Okay, so you, but, but, but take into account again, if somebody has land, almost every house that I walk through has landscaping in the front. So how much?
Not on the driveway.
Well, you don't, no, 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 you can't have this in the driveway.
Oh, I got horseshoe, yeah, I got a loop, I guess I could, sorry, you don't, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking of my own yard when I say that. Okay, if we just put max size three hundred square feet, let's see, that's a fifteen by twenty. That's about the size, maybe a little smaller than this area right here. I could fit a lot of stuff in there.
So we're taking contractors, I'm, I'm thinking homeowner, like what would you?
Well, I'm thinking both.
Yeah.
I'm thinking both.
But like you said, you know, there's limited on what you're going to put outside of the tent.
Well, yeah, in terms of, I mean.
Humidity.
Well, humidity and theft, yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's gonna limit what you think out there.
Okay, so what size are we saying?
Let's go, let's just pop three hundred out there.
Three hundred square feet?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Even tools, I mean, who's gonna leave there, I mean, just contractors now come with their vans and stuff, I, I wouldn't leave my tools out.
But the, the kinds of things I think you're gonna leave in there, but even now, like lumber, I probably would leave, but, but for the most part, I think people don't walk off with drywall.
Right.
You know, stuff like, stuff like that, okay? Um, let me just take a run at what else I had in here.
The, the rest of the things that are here, really do not apply to what we're saying. Because the other section that I have here is the food vendors.
Nah, that doesn't really.
And then they have special events, but only,
We don't need that.
Only those that are sponsored by town count usually.
Yeah.
So it doesn't apply, so the only thing that applies is on Tuesday.
Oh, hey, wait a minute, here, here, here it says, um, accessory structures, if, this is Southern Pine's, if a society with a project that requires a building permit, the temporary use will be noted on the building permit, in other words, that you have an accessory structure that's temporary, shall be noted on the building permit application along with an acknowledgement that the container, or in this case, the tent, shall be moved within ten days of issuance. I saw it, I thought it said thirty, but I like ten better.
Ten days from the?
From, ten, must be, shall be removed within ten days of issuance of the final inspection or certificate of occupancy if applicable.
That's better, ten days.
I think, yeah, yep, I think that's much better. Ten days. And we got, uh, issuance of C O, and this would be the same thing, I think, issuance of C O or final inspection.
Okay, now, this one does have, uh, temporary dwelling.
Yeah, but we're not talking about temporary dwellings.
We're not gonna.
Not yet, no, 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 no. That's, is that Aberdeen?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so so far, we got temporary structures for construction, remodeling, no matter what, they need to be permitted. We don't think there's need for the cost for it, but they have to be permitted.
Right.
The new, the construction one, it's, you gotta have that accessory structure off your property within ten days of issuance of the C O or final inspection. For remodeling, I guess, I would think it would, would be within ten days of the final inspection. Unless, what if you're doing something that doesn't need an inspection?
Like what?
No. Not everything needs an inspection.
Cutting trees? Do they need?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you cut whatever tree you want?
Yes, no, you can't cut whatever tree you want, you have to maintain enough trees under, ten seed-bearing trees per acre. Yeah. Um.
I just find that people in this area have a love affair with removing trees.
All right, let me go back to the remodeling one. You think six months is too long, well, maximum six months, and, and if, if we give them ninety days upfront, and they need additional time, they need to come to Lisa.
So it'd be another?
Well, she could do a month, she, they might come and say, hey, look, my stuff's coming. Well, she could do a month. She, they might come and say, hey, look, my stuff's coming to you.
Not that be another ninety days, that's it, that's fine.
Not more than another ninety days. So you have a maximum of six months, one time per year. All right. Okay, now, I think we also need to say that temporary structures cannot just be used for storage. You have to have them in conjunction with something going on in your house. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I mean, like, if you need to clean your closets so you can get your stuff in, you need to do, well, I need to do that. All right. All right. Okay. Um, what else, you guys?
I don't think anything else. None of this?
I had, it was interesting for, on Pinehurst, because they, they seem like they're more generous. Cause theirs is thirty percent of the heated, this is for accessory buildings.
Well, wait, we're talking about temporary structures. We're talking, not accessory buildings, we're talking about temporary structures, yeah, yeah. No, that, no, that makes sense, because if you take their thirty percent, that is pretty, that is pretty generous.
Yeah.
Woo-hoo, so our move to go to four hundreds, all right. Get out of there.
Yes, so that sounds, everything sounds good.
What about, anybody read anything? Well, let me tell you what Whispering Sign, Whispering Mines says.
Not much.
Oh. All right, in all non-resi-, okay, temporary buildings or temporary uses of buildings require a temporary use permit issued by the zoning administrator. The administrator shall determine if the size, location, and the, the appearance of the building will be compatible with the surrounding area. We could sue over that. The temporary use permit shall state the period for which the administrator determines as reasonably necessary for its purpose. I think that's a little vague.
And this is, this is-
This is Whispering Mines.
This is actually putting too much on reserving.
Well, yeah, and when you don't have something that-
There's no guidelines.
When you don't have something that's enforceable, that's, that's when you end up with a board of adjustment, and then, there's nothing wrong with that, but we, when we make something really clear and enforceable, we can-
Yes.
Okay, now, they also have, um, something that says in all, oh, wait a minute. Oh, we're only talking about residential districts here, aren't we? We're only talking about residential districts.
Yeah, well-
Well, cause Whispering Mines has a thing in here that says, in all non-residential zoning districts, temporary buildings may be used in place of buildings made uninhabitable by, by fire, flood, or other natural disaster for the period necessary to reconstruct the inhabited buildings and its temporary construction offices for the period necessary for construction. But that's not residential. Okay, so I need to make a note here. Temporary structures, residential.
Do we want it for business structures?
I don't want it, I don't want it for business structures tonight, no.
No, I mean, do we wanna have something like this also?
Well, I think that's a, I think that's a reasonable, I think this is a little more complicated than I thought. Okay, um, it, it says, in residential developments, this is still Whispering Mines, in residential developments, you can have temporary buildings for temporary construction offices for the period necessary for the initial developer's construction. So it doesn't address what we're talking about. But we've already, we've already filled that one out.
Only has it as temporary landfill, temporary real estate office, temporary wireless, it doesn't, Aberdeen doesn't have a specific thing for commercial.
Okay. Um, we're probably gonna need to write something for commercial, but let's don't do that tonight, okay?
Well, besides, I think that if we have our other partners here to discuss this, it'll be easy.
Well, yeah, okay, so temporary structures, here's what I have so far. We got the occupancy within ten days. We got the initial remodeling period, um, ninety days with an option for additional time at zoning administrator discretion, max six months. You can only do it one time per year. Max, uh, needs to be within the setbacks, maximum size three hundred square feet. Temporary structures may not be used for storage outside of construction or remodeling, okay? All right, I'm good with that. I mean, that's a, that's a decent start.
I think that's a good start.
Yeah, I think it's a good start, okay. So let's move on to new business.
Okay. Should I address my?
Oh, what's your question? Is this new business?
It's gonna relate to the other part that you wanted. Uh, it didn't dawn on me until recently, that I, that I, because I started, I saw two of them, about this, the houses that have a garage, and yet that they're doing, it's not a temporary structure, now, it's not a shed, it's a permanent other garage on the property.
Hang on one second.
I didn't know that we could do that.
Well, where did you see them?
You don't wanna me to tell you.
Well, the reason I'm bringing up is that before, when we get into this, when we get into, and we're, we're not gonna spend a lot of time on this next one, because it's really not something that planning and zoning can, can really do something with, okay?
Yeah, it just seemed to be like, hmm?
Okay, in accessory buildings, here's what it says in U D O, section twenty-one dash eight point one. And this references, um, detached garages, when the main building has no garage, it's number thirteen. Detached garages, when the main building has no garage, are not considered accessory buildings for the purpose of the restrictions in this subsection above. Carports are not permitted, okay? So, there is a house on Hoffman.
Yeah.
If you're going down Hoffman toward Roseland, there is a house on the right-hand side that has no garage.
Okay, the, the, the particular house that I'm talking about has a garage.
Okay. With, Teresa, what this is saying is that if the main building doesn't have a garage, and you put up a detached garage, that detached garage is not considered an accessory building. If somebody has a house with an attached garage, they can put up a detached, with, I'm sorry. If somebody has a house with an attached garage, which most of us do, and that person chooses to put up a detached garage, that counts as accessory space. Makes sense?
It makes sense.
Okay.
The, the delineator is, if you have a home that does not have an attached garage, you can put up both a detached garage and an accessory building. If your home has an attached garage, you can put up a detached garage, but that counts as an accessory building. That counts as accessory space. Does that make you see the examples in a different way?
Yeah, I just, the only thing that throws me off is because in my head, when we were talking about a accessory building or, in this case, when we're talking about sheds, they're actually not on a permanent foundation. They can be moved anytime.
Oh, no, some sheds are on a permanent foundation.
They are?
Yep. Yep. Yeah.
How big would the-
So I didn't know that we had, we had, uh-
Accessory buildings larger than twelve feet in any direction or greater than one hundred and forty-four square feet, including storage sheds, require a permanent foundation such as a cement slab or footings with block and brick, yeah. Oh, yeah, it's all laid out.
Okay.
That is not, it's not the Wild West where you go to do that.
If you build, if your house does not have a garage, and you're, and you're building a garage, it's not considered an accessory building.
Correct.
Unless, like, it's cut off there, it doesn't have a-
Square footage?
Mm-hmm.
It does not. Um, hang on a second. Wait, 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 wait. Restrictions in subsection three above. Wait, wait. Okay, the only restriction would be that, let's say-
The setbacks again?
Well, yeah, always the setbacks, but, um, if your house does not have an attached garage, and you're gonna put up a detached garage, you are limited to three, currently limited, if you have less than one acre, to ten percent of the total area under roof of the main building, or three hundred square feet, whichever is greater.
So that, does this coincide, whatever sizes that we talk about, this, uh, permanent structure, uh, as, as an accessory building, does it coincide with the same, uh, things that we went through for the accessory building?
Ah, run that, run that for me again, Teresa.
I, so I am, I, I cannot do anything more than four hundred, uh-
Well, that's our recommendation. That's not, that's not-
No, but, I mean, I just, let's go through the, the exercise of, of discussing it, okay? So let's say that I decided that I wanted to build a permanent structure and throw my shit away.
Okay.
Okay, will I have to adhere to the same size?
Yes.
Of the things that I have as an accessory building then?
Huh? Where?
Building an accessory building has to fall within the-
You said that if I have a garage-
No, you can't, if you have a garage, you can't build, then you, you can't build an, another building, call it a garage. It's an accessory building.
It's an accessory building, but it can be a garage.
Right, but it has to be, but it has to be within the garage.
Right, so, let, 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 let me use my, let me use my house as an example. After our planning zoning training, and we went onto Moore County, and I saw, I got like thirty-two hundred and fifty square feet under roof. I'm like, hot dang, okay? So, if I was to build a detached garage, I can, and I'm under one acre, I can't exceed ten percent of the total area under roof of the main building, which in my case would be three hundred and twenty-five square feet, or three hundred square feet, whichever is greater. So if I go to build an accessory building, and I want it to be a garage, which is fine, it cannot exceed three hundred and twenty-five square feet.
So it coincides with the si-, say, the size of the accessory?
Yeah, yeah, you can't have-
Whether it is a garage, permanent, or, or a shed.
Is there a limit? Well, yeah, there is a limit based on, yeah, okay.
But, let me just be clear. So you, we're saying to build that accessory building, then at three hundred, or in your case, it'd be three twenty-five, but we're saying it's four hundred. That's what we recommend.
No, 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 that's where our recommendation is.
Right, the recommendation.
Yeah, so, so if we get the recommendation to four hundred, it will still say, shall not exceed ten percent of the total area under roof of the main building, or four hundred square feet. Yeah, but that's right, that's not in there yet.
Right, okay.
Okay, so, Teresa, that answers your question about detached garages?
Yes, it does, it does. I just didn't know.
You wouldn't be able to put a two-car garage, probably.
Probably not, no. You could put a one.
Listen, the one that I, I was looking at, it looked like it, but I can't get close enough.
If you go, and, and here, I, I'll tell you something too. Let's, let's move over to the one we're gonna talk about tonight, and I'll just fill you in a little bit. The request for two accessory buildings.
Too, too, too far, far, far from reality.
Here's, here's the challenge. I mean, you can build up to twenty percent on your lot, right? And we just increased the size of the accessory building from, on one to two acres to six hundred square feet. If we open it up, I just, I'm just, ah, I just think that this particular case needs to go to the board of adjustment.
Okay, I don't know if I can ask about this here. Why is there a need for so much?
Well, it, whether there is, that's really not up to us.
No, no, but I mean, I would like to know, because it sounds like it's a desperate case where I'm-
I don't know. That, that, that I don't know.
Doesn't it sound like a desperate case?
I, I don't, I just, I don't see a valid reason to make it two, you know, two buildings. It, the, the answer was there, is to combine the lots, and then you have, you can build a bigger, you can build a bigger accessory building, right? Because then they'll have two acres.
Right. Well, it's just under two.
Right, so that's, that's, that's the simple way to do it, just combine the lots, for whatever reason they don't want to split the lots.
Yeah, but it still doesn't-
Well, here, let's, let's just walk through it, because I'm gonna have to give him an answer. Um, let me just go to-
I still don't feel I would support it.
No, not, not two. Even Pinehurst?
No, no, because then what happens is, if you put two in one to two, then you're gonna have to go to three as you go up the ladder, and then four. Well, now, now you look like, I, I mean,
No, and, and-
One six hundred square foot accessory building, that is a big, I mean, that's a big building.
That's if they combine the lots.
Right.
Right, so-
And if, and if not, then we're recommending you could have four hundred square feet on a single lot, yeah. But I wanna go through, just really quick, cause I need to, I'm gonna need to answer, which is fine, he's a nice guy.
Very eloquent. Most I don't like, no.
Yeah, he does, yeah. Let me just get up here where I was. Okay, so. All right. I'm gonna open this. All right, so here's what needs, specifically need to look at. Didn't he specifically ask us to go through a couple things? Okay, he asked us if we would, um-
Well, he said that if you put both pieces together, it doesn't go to two acres.
No, it doesn't. But what he asked us to do was either, he wanted us to recommend an exception, which we can't do, and he's a, he's a very nice man, and I've talked about this, so we can decline, we're gonna decline, to make a recommendation to the council on changing it, because we don't think we should.
I, I don't approve it. I don't see any reason.
Yeah, I don't either.
What is the, what is it if you combine it? It's less than two?
I think it's two thirty thousand square foot lots. So he's at, um, sixty thousand square feet, so he's sitting on just under an acre and a half. Okay? So I, I, I think, I mean, we could, we don't even need to really take, we're not making a recommendation.
No, I don't think so either.
I just, I just don't think, I mean, that's not-
Doesn't fit our-
It, I'm not gonna, I don't think we should make a recommendation to the council to, to change it.
No.
Maybe it's fair.
Um, I, I think that the place for this to go needs to be the board of adjustment. Now, one of the other things he asked about was writing a different zoning, basically, for some of the lots on Green Valley, because they butt up, do they butt up to Birdie Court? I gotta look for a really quick second. I could go over there and look, I guess. Um, but here's the thing, we don't have many places in the village where lots butt each other. All right, we're gonna have some on Wendy Ridge, and we talked to the developer about leaving more trees in the back so that, you know, you don't feel like you're butting something else's lot. We have a couple on Ridge Road, um, that butt, I think, Saddleback, which is the, the couple houses that were built where the developer, um, didn't have to pave the road, okay? And then, if you go down the road to Pineland Preserve here on the left-hand side, as you go down Hoffman to Roseland, some of those butt, okay? But most of ours do not, and if we start writing exception zoning for lots that butt, I think we're just gonna be in a mess.
I agree. I don't think we need to.
Yeah. Um, so, my recommendation to the mayor was, and, and, and the gentleman's been told this, he needs to go to the board of adjustment. And remember, when you go to the board of adjustment, you have to show hardship. So, um, I think we just, and I don't know, he has one accessory building already on the property. And I'm thinking, well, could you just, like, move it and put a common wall and build another, you know, four hundred and twenty feet? I mean, four hundred and twenty feet, that'd be a decent sized garage.
For the, for the one building.
Right, but I mean, if you combine the lots, and you get an accessory, you build a bigger accessory building that matches the one you have, and you move the one you have, and you make it share a common wall with the one that you're building, I, I mean, I mean-
What is the, I don't have the letter, but what is his, what is his request for, why does he need it?
It doesn't really say.
That's, that's, that was my question.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't really say. So, anyway, I'll just share that with the mayor and, and share that with him, and I don't know that there's really anything else that we need to, that we need to do on a- Pardon?
Are we moving to deny requests, or?
Well, not really, because it's, we're just declining to make, we're declining to make a recommendation to the council to increase the number of allowable accessory buildings in that one to two acre, um, portion to two. And we're declining, um, to make separate zoning for the lots on Green Valley, and do they butt Birdie Court?
There's no, there's, there's no hardship. There's nothing saying-
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna snub a rump, but you know.
Come up with something, I mean, if you had some valid reason that you really needed it, I can understand, all right, let's think about it, but if you're not even coming up with a valid- Come up with something, I mean, if you had some valid reason that you really needed it, I can understand, all right, let's think about it, but if you're not even coming up with a valid reason.
No, just because I have too much, it sounds to me like I have too much junk, I have more space.
Well, cause I want more space. Right, I want, I want more. And and I get it, but.
So I think that's the reason. Here, okay, here's Birdie, yeah, it's the lots on Birdie Court and Green Valley that abut, come here, you guys, I'll show you. Okay, so here's Birdie Court, and here's Green Valley, so these lots abut, okay? If you come down here, right here, this is Pineland Preserve, these lots all abut, okay?
Yeah, and which one is the other one that is?
Kids, these are right here, Birdie Court and Green Valley, okay, and if you go. Staddle Lane, where's Ridge? What is that, that's Ridge, where's Ridge, you did you? Wait a minute.
This?
Wait, where am I here? I didn't play, hang on a second.
The black one, it's covered, is that it?
Um, what happened to Ridge Road here, Mayor? This is Shamrock.
So I'm saying, is this it?
Oh, wait a minute, Ridge Road.
Ridge Road.
Oh, yeah, she wrote on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good, okay, so you have a couple here, and a couple over there that abut, okay? So I just, I mean, I don't, uh, to entertain separate zoning, I mean, look at, all these abut. There are lots, I mean, there are lots of lots in here that abut, if you, actually. If you're not on a golf course, all these lots abut, don't they?
Looks it.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's no road.
Yeah.
So there are lots of lots, lots of lots of lots that abut. So if you start writing a separate zoning for that, you're gonna be in a suit.
Yes.
You're gonna be in a suit, okay? All right, so, I'll take care of that, and then I think. Okay, one other thing I'll tell you is, um. When, one of the things he referenced was a house on Five Whitman Court. And that house has both a deta- an attached garage, a detached garage, and an accessory building. I looked it up on the Moore County website, the permit for the detached garage was issued in January of twenty thirteen. At that time, the planning and zoning board, I don't believe was functional. If, that's when it still had nine members, remember, we talked about that, it had nine members, and they had a tough time getting it for him, and at that time. The appearance committee actually were the ones that approved that garage, it wasn't Lisa, okay? So all, that entire process was amended, okay? So now all those things have to go through the zoning administrator, so, um, that came up as, hey, look, I mean, this, I see this house. And this house has a detached garage, an attached garage, and an accessory building, but the zoning has since changed. And once the zoning changes, if you had what they have at Five Whitman Court, your grandfather, okay?
Right.
But it doesn't mean we're gonna do it again, okay? All right, that said, um, any other old new business?
Court.
No. All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Done, all right.